Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this evening's October eighteenth Committee of the Whole. It looks like we have five items on this evening's agenda to discuss. As a reminder, the floor will be open to members of the public or audience who wish to speak for twenty minutes. They can address the City Council on matters that are on this evening's agenda, and that can happen after the City Council has discussed the item with staff or the presenter. We ask that any person wishing to address the City Council keep their comments to five minutes in length. And of course, profanity may not be used at any time. The first item we have this evening is the fiscal year 2023 library budget, and for this, we'll defer to the Executive Director of the Rolling Meadows Library, Kevin Meadows. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me tonight. I learned that you have copies of those slides, which is terrific, because some of them I won't really talk a lot about, but I'm glad you have them, and I will answer questions about any of them if needed. It's a pleasure to be here in this city. I've lived here for thirteen years. I've been a librarian for twenty years, and now I'm serving my community. It's a true honor. The 2023 budget, I've come into the job just under five months ago. The 2023 budget is my first. In this first slide, I just want to call your attention to the very bottom line, because some of this is covered in what I already said to you before, but the bottom line is the most important one to me. I think that our relationship is about partnership, mutual support, which we experience regularly, and our shared values. The rest is just the structures that bring us together. So we are in waters uncharted and familiar. The CPI, eight point eight, I don't need to tell you that. That's the news of the day. We are seeing the effects of that, library materials, costs of library materials, everything. And also, it affects expectations about earnings. It affects people's buying power when they're at the grocery store. It affects staff greatly. Another sort of uncharted territory is coming out of COVID. Within days of arriving at the library, I was asked about going back to in-person programming. I was very excited about doing so. We started doing so right away, and the interest has been really high. I'm very glad about that. Attendance has been growing rapidly. COVID taught us things, the value of hybrid or remote programming, broadcast programming. So we have been trying hybrid programming, where it's partially in-person, partially simulcast. It's been great. Another big lesson is, how do we serve the public when we're in interesting times? We have to close the building for some reason. We learn that there are things we can do, and we learn that those things we can do have value even when we're not in a pandemic. And twenty-four-seven whole pickup lockers is something I'm going to talk to the trustees about this year. Other work we're doing, we just started an e-newsletter. We've just started e-communicating. Aside from just notices, we're now sending out content about programs, and we're seeing a huge positive effect on program registration. The other thing I'll just mention for this page is, right away, we're looking into circulating things we've never circulated before, mobile hotspots, laptops, Roku's content streaming devices that allow people to have access to all kinds of content. We're already starting to work on that. We're excited about that. So new things are coming. And I say "other things," we call them "library of things things," and possibilities abound. Worked on a library that circulated telescopes, fishing poles, and they all circulated. So we want to experiment. This is just to show you that things are happening. I'm projecting, I think it's going to be greater than five percent more than last year. So things are looking good as far as usage. As you might expect, our physical and digital resources expenditures are growing. To meet need, we have to raise that substantially. I call your attention to the green band and the blue, because that's the electronic. The green is ebooks, e-audiobooks. Prices are very interesting there. Hundred and thirty dollars for an ebook, frightening to think about, and you need to have lots of titles. And it doesn't circulate to everyone. It's one at a time, so it's very costly. But well-loved. So as you saw in the write-up for the meeting in your packet, the levy increase that the trustees have designated is five percent. That's the levy request. We ask that you levy on our behalf, use your levying powers to do so. The levy makes up for community understanding. I want the community to understand that the levy makes up just four point two percent of the property tax bill. That's the part that we're asking to be raised by five percent. So to bring it home, a homeowner with a home valued at $275,000, they should expect an increase of about fifteen dollars in the line of their tax bill called the Rolling Meadows Library Fund. That number, by my calculations, is really twelve dollars and something, but I rounded up just to be safe. Little levy history for you, roller coaster ride. I think that's to be expected when you operate exclusively on mostly tax dollars. I don't have a lot to tell you about 2007, but I can understand why it happened and how it helps. I think we would be in dire, dire straits if it hadn't happened, but I don't know the backstory. I checked all my figures. I checked financial statements, and my financial services coordinator worked with me on that. We think that's an accurate number. So the five percent you see looks like quite a climb over on the right, but if you think about the two years, not long ago, when we did levy decreases, you almost understand why now it's five. I think if those were not decreases and were more normalized, all of the last five years would be sort of, would be much more normal. This is just to give a sense of what portion of our overall funds come from the general operating levy, ninety-four point four percent. In my other write-up, I said ninety-eight point eight, and that refers to also the PPRT. So that was more general information about tax. This is about the general operating levy. Our friends of the library help us a lot. It's a significant amount of dollars that help us produce programs. We're very grateful. Their work, their productivity is found in that top part. I hope you all can read this. I wasn't sure it would be readable on the screen. I wanted to give you a sense of where we are in relation to other libraries. RAILS, R-A-I-L-S, reaching across Illinois library system, is our library system in the northern part of Illinois. They have a portal for me to start a survey and ask other libraries, what are your planned levy increases in the coming year? These are the respondents. So it's not a designed survey. It is relatively representative and does have peer libraries in it. And anyone that you see over five probably did a truth and taxation hearing or something like that, or they have some other additional levy available to them related to, there are other levies available in some of the other acts, sometimes related to maintenance staff and pensions, things like that. I also wanted to give you a sense of cost of living pay increases with our peers, because that's whom we are competing with for talent. We have a job posted now for two months and have had two applicants. It's posted at our current pay rate. It's been very difficult to fill the position. We're not the only one telling this story. I know you understand. Anyone who's enjoyed having very staggered school start times because the bus schedules had to be staggered knows what it means to be affected by hiring. So you'll see, we sort of sit in the middle. You'll see several entries there where some of the libraries have a base increase, and then they're going to be doing some benchmarking. These are libraries that have realized they can't get talent unless they kind of get their salaries in line with others. They have to adapt to minimum wage. Some of the lines where you see nothing, that doesn't mean they're not doing it. In some cases, it means they already did it. And I know for a fact, some of the ones entered there already did do this work. We're going to be doing that in 2023. Okay, in the offing, in the near term, this is what's on our plate. We desperately need a building systems engineering evaluation. Last one was done in the year 2000, just before Spacewives, he went to Jupiter and found a monolith. And then we have the information technology systems audit, and that is something we desperately need as well. That's less costly. We're going to learn, that one will reveal probably less, but the first one is going to be major. So we, in next year, I think that the very top items that we're already able to tackle will be upgrading our outdoor signs. And it's a big project. You know what I hear a lot? And even when I told people I had this job, some of them said, "Where is that library?" Rolling Meadows has a library? So we have some work to do to make ourselves known where we are. And one of our signs faces Kirchhoff. You can see it right down the road. We need to work on having the right kind of signage which calls attention to ourself. We lost a tree there during a storm in my first week of work, and it was a blessing in disguise, because it made me realize, oh, there's a sign there. So we're going to do something about that. We have some parking lot resurfacing to think about. However, if the building systems evaluation tells us there is a higher priority, we'll probably postpone the parking lot. And then we have technology equipment upgrades. So our current capital projects balance, fund balance, is five fifty to thirty-four, and allocated in this levy is $100,000 to add for capital projects, but there are expenditures in 2023 expected. As you can see, I've listed two things there, but it's possible that something from the engineering evaluation will draw us in a new direction. When I say near-term projects there, I really mean probably 2024. The first one, recovering the building, it's actually been punted on a few times. We really can't wait any longer. I just punted it to 2024, because as a new director coming in, I was concerned about getting the budget going, getting the budget figured out, getting it passed, and the whole bid process that would be involved in all the planning. And I didn't think it was a good idea to point that for 2023, so that's why it's listed here in 2024. We have two boilers from our year 2000 building evaluation. They were given a life of about twenty years. That is around 2020 then, and that was if treated well. They were treated well. They were treated very well by our retiring facilities department director. He's retiring at the end of this month, and he bought us some extra time. We'll keep treating them well, but doomsday is right around the corner. Something needs to be done. That's a fresh estimate from a firm that knows the system, knows our systems that we work with. And then where does that leave us with capital projects? This is what kept me up at night, as soon as I started. This is what I would wake up at night thinking about. Five hundred and fifty thousand to start with, that makes me nervous. That's not a sum I'm very comfortable with at all. I wish it was double. So this is the last slide, actually. The rest was just there in case we need to discuss anything. So we are plotting a mission-centered course. We do need to do strategic planning. The most important part for me, and the most exciting part for me, is the assessment phase. We call up all the voices. We say, "Speak to us." Staff survey, staff focus group, community focus group, community surveys. At Joliet, we did a telephone survey. It was very interesting. It may, just in your mind, telephone survey, oh, my God, it was so valuable. We reached people who don't use the library. We learned their thoughts about the library. And then there was give and take, so all those extra notes were taken. It was a conversation. Last library I worked at did a mailed-out survey, again, reaching people who aren't using the library, learning what their needs are, and then in the planning phase, you adapt to that. To take it a little further, I asked the staff soon after my arrival, "Help me build a staff survey." So they submitted all the questions. The question from me was simple. "Let me know what you would like to be asked, or you would like to be asked of me or your colleagues." And so we built that staff survey that they will have a chance to then respond to. My favorite part of the whole conversation is this last piece, discovery and access. The end-user experience does reign supreme. It is the most important thing. It should be on our minds at all times. How do people experience the library? And Rolling Meadows Library must answer this question, should we join a library consortium? That's a group of libraries that are part of a membership. They have a shared software, and you have a single catalog where you discover all the holdings of area libraries. There's a consortium in our area of almost thirty libraries. It becomes very easy to discover materials at all those libraries and request them, and then they get brought right here for you to use. Rolling Meadows Library is an appropriate library for this kind of arrangement. We bring value to the membership, and we get value from the membership. And then my favorite, the website is virtual branch. This is the thing we must remember first and foremost. Our current website was developed in 2007. It served its purpose. It's time for us to think about the whole end-user experience when you land on the website. How do you get to all of our offerings in any form? And how do you register for a program? How do you move around? Too many dead ends, I see. Dead ends are dangerous. Dead ends are the end, and if something isn't linked, somebody might just go somewhere else and stop looking. So we have a lot of work to do. The concept of virtual branch is to say that a portion of the public uses primarily what's available via our website, and we need to focus on that. It also is to say that it should encompass all that we can tell people that we have, and the experience of getting there should be simple. Not, you shouldn't have to know what search box to use, what search tool to use. You should have as few search starting points as possible and navigate around and be guided. And also ask, "Did you find what you were looking for?" Some process of saying, you know, "Are you lost?" And the best end-user design does do that as much as possible. So we will be inventive. We will take chances, and it's time to roll. And I can take any questions if there are.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Are there any questions for the Executive Director?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to clarify, in one of the slides where our question was, where was that big spike in 2007? And in past presentations, we were told that that was in response to a capital improvement project, therefore, the levy was increased for that project and then immediately decreased once the product was completed. However, after listening to your presentation here tonight, it sounds like you were really frustrated with the fact that our capital funding is not double what it should be. And so that's an example of where we can see maybe that the levy could be normalized over time in the future, so I appreciate you bringing that up. I also appreciate all the enthusiasm that you've brought to this presentation as well and to the library. We're glad that you're here, Mr. Meadows, and we look forward to all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Snaga. Alderman O'Brien, did you have any?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Vessessa.
Yeah, I just wanted you to, there's a couple of other things that I think not only the council but the residents may want to know. I do know regarding the website. I'm glad you mentioned that, because at your last meeting, we saw kind of beginnings of where you're going to go. Do you know when that new website might get rolled out?
Oh, very good. In fact, I'm going to enhance your question a little bit and mention our library app. After sending out these slides, I thought, "The app!" I forgot the one slide. We also have a library app. Go to Google Play, go to the App Store, search Rolling Meadows Library. Try using this app. It's a great discovery point. It actually guides you to more of our content than our online catalog does. And you can, once you link your account with it, it displays your barcode. You never have to carry a library card around anymore. You just bring your phone up to the desk and you read it in. So the app is already available. So our website plan is twofold. It's an interim new one, which is already in design using a content management system. It's right around the corner, but that sort of North Star one that I talked about, that's going to take a little more time. That requires more development.
Anything else?
No, I just wanted to bring that up, because I knew you'd missed it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman McHale.
I do have one, and I don't know if this is going to be a really popular question, but is there any indication of bringing back library fines? Do we, have we implemented them again? I don't think.
We have not implemented them again. I have personally never thought of them as a revenue source, and so that would not be the motivation. If it affects other people's use experiences, then it would be done. Interestingly, just today, on the directors list, the library directors list through that library system that I told you about, somebody posted fines and fees, "How's it going?" But I have this tonight, so I didn't read any of it. I can't wait to read it tomorrow, because it's a good question. Other services we're looking into are auto-renewal. Some libraries are doing that, where they auto-renew things, and we've looked over the logistics of that. And I used to be a system administrator for library systems, so I can go on way too long about what's possible within the system. But so far, so good. As far as I know, we, Rolling Meadows has been doing it a little while. Some libraries have been doing it for a long time. I haven't heard of anybody going back. And I'd say, once you give, it's hard to take away.
Oh, sure. Thank you for that.
Any other questions from the council? Well, Mr. Meadows, thank you for the presentation, for the transparency, and we look forward to observing the transformations over time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You, too. Let's bring us to the second item, which are the results of the Kennedy Pond Professional Engineering and Pond Evaluation. For this, we'll defer to our Public Works Director, Aaron Grosskopf, and Joellen Charlton's up here, too, so maybe there's a curveball thrown my way, so I can change on me. Joellen, welcome to the panel.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're happy to present the results of this study to you. I'm actually just going to be pretty much turning it over to Ryan Lindeman, our consulting engineer from Christopher Burke. As you might recall, we, council authorized this study earlier this year, and specifically, it was to perform a bathometric survey of the pond. The specific intent of that survey was to determine if and to what extent, if any, the pond depths were impacting the seemingly increasing algae blooms, particularly during the hot summer months. So Ryan is going to present not only the results of that survey and talk about the impacts of the water depths and the infiltration and sedimentation on the algae blooms, but then we also asked them in that study to evaluate different alternatives for addressing those. So that's going to look at some of the cost benefit of doing the various recommendations that were made. So I'm going to introduce you to Ryan. He'll provide the report, and we'll be happy to answer questions after that.
Thank you, Joellen. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, committee members. The Kennedy Pond Study, there's a lengthy report in the packet. The intent of this presentation is to provide a synopsis of the findings, discuss the restoration alternatives, and then discuss the staff recommendations, and then open it up to questions. So the introduction and background, Christopher Burke was tasked with assessing the pond depths, the stormwater functioning, and the cause and potential resolution of some of the algal blooms that residents complain about during the hot summer months. This is largely an aesthetic and appearance issue with expansive floating algal blooms during, from June through, I'd say, early September. The picture on the right, you can see the brown floaty stuff on the leeward side towards Salt Creek. This is commonly where most of the algae blooms occur, which is the downwind side of the pond. Discuss some of the maintenance history. The city has invested over a million dollars over the past twenty years, be it streambank stabilization, channel excavation, shoreline stabilization, spillway replacement project, the installation of arrator bubbler systems, and ongoing chemical treatments twice per month in the summer months. I was actually involved as the resident engineer on the streambank stabilization and channel excavation projects in 2012, as well as the spillway replacement project in 2017. So what were some of the key findings from our evaluation? As Joellen stated, we did a bathometric survey of the water depth as well as the sediment depth throughout the pond. This was performed in late spring, early summer of 2022. We then compared these findings to the original pond grading plan for the Kennedy Brothers Development. It was determined there's a max water depth of four and a half feet. When originally constructed, it was five point two feet, and there is an average sediment depth of roughly three quarters of a foot. There are some areas where it was deeper, some where it was less deep, but on average, it's about three quarters of a foot, which kind of lines up with the max depth of four and a half versus the plan of five point two. The image to the right shows the original grading plan with the bathometric data shown in small font overlaid on that grading plan. I believe the report that you have in your packet details the findings a little bit more clearly. So sedimentation decreases the water depth, which depletes O2 levels. Shallow water warms more quickly, and oxygen depleted warm-water environments promote algae blooms. O2 is less soluble as temperatures increase. So this is why you notice algae blooms rapidly appear in June, July, as the temps increase, and overnight temps don't drop as much. And also, shallow water does warm more quickly, and it retains that heat longer. Another component of the evaluation was studying the upstream tributary watershed. Another component of the evaluation was studying the upstream tributary watershed. The image on the right is somewhat difficult to see, but Kennedy Pond sits at the confluence, the endpoint of this 1,380 acre plus upstream tributary area. It's right at the end of the confluence with Salt Creek. An analogy here would be a small kidney in a large body. The pond, I believe, is three acres, and it is the confluence point for nearly 1,400 acres of upstream tributary area. Stormwater runoff carries fertilizers, leaf litter, decaying organic material, and winter road salt into Kennedy Pond. High concentrations of these nutrients will cause more frequent and intense algae bloom cycles. The source of the input nutrient loading is not going away. Because this is an online pond, meaning that it's not a standalone detention pond, it's actually part of the stream and creek system that flows into Salt Creek. It's constantly receiving all of the nutrient loading from the upstream tributary area, which is Palatine, Inverness, lots of manicured lawns, lots of roads that receive salt, a lot of organic material that gets, makes its way into the watershed. Another evaluation point would be the aeration system effectiveness. Currently, the city uses six bubbler arrators, and it's, our assessment is that it appears that this system may be undersized. We'd like to evaluate the system performance to determine efficacy, and this will be done by assessing the dissolved oxygen levels in the water at various times of the year and temperatures of water. The effectiveness, I believe the system is 10 to 15 years old at this point, and the age of the system components could be contributing to its effectiveness. The analogy here would be the fuel economy of your vehicle. The more mileage you have, the less fuel economy you have. Gaskets wear and tear, and suction components lose their effectiveness over time, so that could be something that is happening here. In addition to that, sedimentation also affects the efficacy of the bubbler arrators. We would also like to assess, one of the recommendations would be that if we do enhance the aeration system, is where those are located within the pond. Locating different types of arrators at different depths within the pond to increase the dissolved oxygen content within the water column. Picture on the right is indicative of algae blooms that are floating on the surface. So, what are the restoration alternatives that we looked into? Dredging was the first, mainly because it increases the pond depth, and as we discussed earlier, deeper water results in cooler water temperatures. Dredging would be, also would remove organic sediment, which contributes nutrients, and those nutrients feed the algae blooms. Less available nutrients, less algal bloom occurrence. The downside with dredging is that it's expensive. One point, our estimation is 1.1 million to 2.6 million, depending on the desired depth and the method of dredging. The images on the right show hydraulic dredging. It's basically a suction that would work its way through the pond. It would take that slurry dred, that dredge slurry mix and direct it to a dewatering filtration bag, so that clean water can filter out and back into the pond, leaving back the muck sediment in the bags. Another downside with dredging is that these, that the area, the laydown area for the dredging material, that dredge material has to dry out over a period of months, like three to six months. And it can also cause an odor when it is drying out. So, in addition to being expensive, it also takes up a lot of area and could be unsightly during the summer months. Another alternative that we looked into was enhancing the current aeration system. Increased dissolved oxygen is the goal, because increased dissolved oxygen is a metric of improved water quality. The decomposition rate of organic vegetation and nutrients increases with more oxygen. Less nutrients available for algae blooms and aquatic plant growth, and less accumulation of organic sediment on the pond bottom. Stated assessing the current arrator bubbler system may be undersized. There are some different types of arrator systems. Right now, the city is solely using bubbler arrators. There's also fountain type arrators, which also spread in a larger area than the bubblers. You can get a radius of 30 or 40 feet, which clears the surface and allows sunlight to enter through the water column. The estimated cost of the enhancements is approximately $25,000. We also look to enhance the chemical treatment protocols. We recommend the city continue chemical treatments already employed by the city. And we would consider the addition of manufactured bacteria and enzymes known as muck digestors. We could work with the current provider of the chemical treatments that the city is using to see if they provide this service. Another alternative is this ultrasonic device. This one is manufactured by LG, but it is a low-powered ultrasound device that emits waves that disrupt algae growth. In addition, the unit monitors water quality, and it has adaptable programming. So, I believe this unit monitors a whole host of different water quality metrics on 10-minute cycles, and it's highly adaptable to changing water conditions, including temperature. The estimated cost on this one is pretty variable here, but it's 5 to 50K depending on the type of unit and the number of units employed. So, our staff recommendations here, given that the, that this is largely an aesthetic issue that happens for three months out of the year, and that the stormwater function of the pond is functioning normal without flood issues, we had to consider the cost-benefit analysis of our value, of our recommendations. So, our first recommendation would be to evaluate the current aeration system in the spring of 2023, budgeting 30K for an improved system to be purchased and installed in fall of 2023 or the spring of 2024. Continue or enhance chemical treatments and consider test applications of the bacteria and enzymes known as muck digestors. Investigate the use of ultrasonic algae control devices for potential implementation in 2024, with an eye towards continuing to evaluate 1 through 3 in the upcoming years, and with the potential for adding dredging alternatives to the capital improvement plan for further discussion in five to 10 years. With that, any questions you may have, or turn it over to the council?
Thank you for the presentation, Ryan. Does the council have any questions on this? Alderman Bessessi and McHale?
Yeah, I only have one question. With the ultrasound, with a pond that size, how many would you think would be needed?
Depending on the type of unit. I believe the unit that we were referencing had a range of, I believe, 250 feet. I think you would need three of them. I don't know the cost offhand. That ultrasonic device, if, part of the investigation would be to discuss that with the manufacturer and get case studies for ponds that are in similar condition and in the similar climate, in a similar area, and what the results are, and what the initial cost is and what the maintenance cost is.
Okay, so some benchmarking and stuff like that.
Okay.
Thank you, Alderman Bessessi. Alderman McHale?
Yeah, this is actually our pond over here in Ward 1. So, I'm the one who gets all the calls about how beautiful the pond looks in July when it's filled with algae and is pretty gross looking. But I think what, what we're, what you're saying here, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, yes, it's an aesthetic issue to start, but you called it like a small kidney in a large body, and that's kind of concerning to me that, you know, we're hiding all this water from surrounding areas into, into this pond that clearly isn't large enough or deep enough to handle the amount of water that's coming in. Is that, is that correct?
More or less, yes.
More or less, yeah. So, I don't think it's only an aesthetic issue. I think that the staff direction is spot on for the way we need to proceed, but I think that ultimately, this is going to be a growing issue in years to come. And I don't know if our environmental committee representative, Alderman Snaga, can speak more to that topic with the water and the tributaries and the surrounding areas and intergovernment, like inter-communities working together. I'm not exactly well-versed, so I don't know if maybe you had any comments to help us out there?
Alderman Snaga?
Thank you. So, well, one item that comes to mind is, you know, I know that the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, this is usually an issue that they would be, that they would take because it requires multiple communities, except I don't know if Inverness is a member of the MWRD. I know that Palatine and Rolling Meadows are. But, as far as this being an issue for us to consider, I think that it could be something that could go towards two committee, but that's, that's what I would recommend. I think that this is an issue where if we're able to make these comparisons, aerial comparisons between Harper College and our pond, then it looks like this is something where maybe we can attack it from all levels, so that way it's not just on Rolling Meadows to make sure that we're maintaining the pH of the water and such. Go ahead, man. Yeah, it looks like the city manager wants to speak on that as well.
Just one comment on it. So, the Salt Creek Watershed has a group of different municipalities that get together and meet from time to time under the auspices of MWRD as well. One of the big topics that's being discussed amongst communities all over, not just in Illinois, nationwide, is what's called stormwater management best management practices, EMPs, or what they're typically referred to. And I think one of the items that Ryan had referred to in the slides was manicured lawns. And one of the issues that we're seeing is a significant increase in the recent use of fertilizers. And typically, fertilizers run off due to being overused or applied before rain, and that gets into these types of water systems. So, one of the things we can explore with, with our environmental committee as well as talking with the Salt Creek Watershed Group is focusing on those stormwater management EMPs and trying to reduce runoff that's getting into the system that helps fuel this, this issue further. So, we can, we can also take that on in conjunction with the committee.
Alderman McHale?
I also just had one other comment. I think when I was reading your report, it had mentioned that there hasn't been any complaints about, what are the names, muskrats, carp, and geese? Was that, is that correct? Anyway, there are, there's actually a ton of carp in there, and at the very minimum, two resident muskrats that I have personally seen. So, I don't know if people aren't calling about them, but they are definitely residents of that pond. So, just FYI. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McHale. Any other questions from the council? Alderman Budmans?
Okay, so, the question is, there's a pond just west of that of significantly larger size on Harper, on Harper property? And curious, if Harper chooses to do nothing with that pond, are we, will our efforts be hampered by the fact that that pond is left the way it is, and it's in the same watershed and probably feeding into our pond?
That's correct. Kind of beholden to the upstream watershed.
So, unless Harper does something with that pond, we could do all we wanted and spend a million bucks and dredge it, and within a year or two, we could be in the same boat again?
My thought on this is that the algae blooms coincide with the warm summer months, and during that time, rainfall is limited. The, the amount of nutrients coming into that system at that point have already made their way there by that point, by and large. There are some cost-effective solutions that we discussed that I believe you could employ that may help the situation regardless of what Harper or anyone else does. But you are still beholden to the upstream watershed.
So, your recommendation, if I could boil it down, is to spend the 20 grand and see if the arrators work, but before we spend a million dollars, we better be sure that we're working in conjunction with whoever's handling Harper's pond?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Budmans. Because it seems like it is a much bigger issue, both up and downstream, and largely aesthetic at this point, because the upstream issues with nutrient runoff are creating exponential growth of the algae or the brown floaty stuff, as you mentioned before, can we take a manual approach and just skim the algae at this time until we can work on a much more comprehensive approach with our neighboring communities and their watersheds?
I can look into, talk with our water resources department and see if skimming is an option. I'm sure it is. I don't know the cost offhand, but something I can report back.
Okay. I just figure it's a way to remediate the immediate aesthetic of the algae, and we won't ever be able to effectively eliminate it until we have the entire watershed from upstream downstream figured out with the nutrient flow issues. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. This will bring us to the third item, which is the policy pertaining to the purchase of new vehicles, and I'll just defer to somebody from staff. Aaron?
It's me this time.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council members. I appreciate your time this evening. I would like to bring forward an item that was discussed at the most recent Vehicle Replacement Committee meeting that we had on September 27th. At that time, it was decided to bring it back to this council committee, the whole meeting, and kind of lay what we have found out and what we had discussed, bring everybody up to date. So, the main issues that we're experiencing are something that are really kind of unprecedented in my tenure as the public works field. Typically, when you order a vehicle, it's, it's a pretty streamlined, easy process. Lately, since 2020, 2021, we have had major issues and delays in getting any vehicles. I believe we're not alone. Multiple municipalities are facing the same issues. I believe there's actually an article in the Daily Herald about it. So, it's not something that is, is Rolling Meadows specific. This is an issue that is going on in our region and possibly across the United States. So, the issues that we're having are, we have been facing severe delays in procurement of vehicles and equipment. So, these are due to either staffing issues, they're due to supply chain issues, demand issues. I mean, there's a whole litany of things that kind of bodes up and made this perfect storm. And just to give you an example of where we're at, we're about eight vehicles behind in our fiscal year 2022 replacement schedule, so a little bit further behind than we would like to be, and we're fearing that we're going to fall into the same trap in 2023 if we don't get an advanced step on this. So, just to give you an example of what it was like five years ago to purchase a vehicle, I would be able to call up a vendor, have them quote me for a truck, and call an upfitter and have them quote me for an upfit. In six months, I would have a truck. Now, it's taken us one to two years even to get into a queue, so we can't even get into a position to have a truck built until a year and a year and a half later after making that original call. So, what we're actually seeking from council tonight is direction to be able to move forward for a purchasing policy resolution that will enable us to essentially put in and create a purchase order for a vehicle, submit that in without council approval right away, get our place in line, and then once we actually get into the queue and have a spot where we're going to actually have a truck that can be updated and built out for us, we would get a finalized quote, and then we would be able to come back to council with an actual firm number and get everything affirmed up the way that has been done in the past, and then we could go through a standard approval at that point. But, what we're looking for right now is a little bit of kind of fluid operating movement within the industry in order to be able to make steps. within the industry in order to be able to make steps, because we're facing windows that are closing in two weeks. We're facing vendors saying that they don't even want to take our order because it's going to be canceled in a year, and then we'd just be waiting and calling and calling and it would be canceled. These are all stories and issues that we've been hearing from others in the industry as well. So to keep this essentially pretty short and sweet, again, what we're looking for is direction from council to be able to bring forward a resolution that will allow us to create a PO and get in line for vehicles that are already budgeted in the fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 2023 vehicle replacement program.
Thank you, Director Grosskopf. And just to confirm and clarify, as is mentioned in the packet, that if the council does by way of straw vote tonight and then move forward with the resolution and approval on this, staff will still have to come back before council for any authorization in moving forward?
Yes. So before we purchase any vehicle, council will have the option to either terminate that and not do it at no fault or penalty to the city whatsoever. So you will always have the final say on the purchase of that vehicle.
Yeah. And to that point, because this situation doesn't look like it's going to resolve itself in the foreseeable future, I think this is one of the only mechanisms that we can utilize at this time to make sure that we can ensure that we don't fall any further than eight vehicles behind at this point. So I appreciate staff bringing this forward. Does any member of the council have any questions or comments or concerns regarding this? Alderman Sanoyka, then O'Brien, then Bessessi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in in the packet that we received, one of the stipulations of the resolution is that there wouldn't be any orders even within the queue if the price of the vehicle exceeded what was budgeted for the vehicle in the plan. Since we also know that costs have increased substantially, is that going to essentially nullify the spirit of this resolution? Or are you looking for some adjustments or wiggle room with the pricing as well?
Not beyond what is already kind of standard for what we have. We've, we're accounting for the price increases in that budget process. So we believe at least for the 2023 vehicles, we'll be okay with our current pricing.
And then for the 2022, is all complete then? Are there any of those eight vehicles that, are all the eight vehicles for the fiscal year 2023?
All eight vehicles are not ordered yet. We're waiting for windows and opportunities to order them.
I understand. My question is just to clarify if those vehicles are part of the fiscal year 2022 or fiscal year 2023 budget?
Those are for 2022.
Although if I can make one clarification. So given the timing, typically with governmental accounting, we don't pay for the item until it's received. So it's likely that even if we order this year, it being October halfway through, those funds may not even be expanded until 2023.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Alderman O'Brien?
Mine was similar. I think the answer is by what was not in the write-up. So no, that was perfect. I appreciate all the time on that. It's like, we would like, if we get in queue now, it would be based on 2022 pricing or like the pricing would be up. Because I think October 1, what I've learned on my time with the council, October 1 seems to be the time when vehicle costs go up for the following year. So I'm in full support of this, just for a better understanding. If we get in queue tomorrow, you're able to get us in queue tomorrow, would the pricing be not until our number gets pulled in the queue in fourth quarter 2023? And the pricing of the new vehicle would be up for then versus 2022?
Yes. Yep, that is correct. So we would, we would move forward officially with the new pricing given to us.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Bessessi?
Okay. Mike, I'm just going to ask, it's virtually the same question. So what you're saying is when we put in this, lack of a better term, cancelable purchase order, we are not necessarily locking in a price at that point?
We are not. So right now, and this is a major issue that we're facing, is no vendors is looking to even lock us into a price until we get a spot up in the queue in line. So a year later, when they say, hey, your truck is finally ready to be built, we have your spot in line, you're up next, that's when we would get the final price, which we would be able to hold onto.
Okay. And at that point, the price would get, the purchase order would get firmed up and prices locked in. Okay.
For my own understanding or clarification, when we get in the queue and we're in line, are we in line with tens of thousands or hundreds? How does this work?
I mean, potentially, depending on the type of truck, hundreds, and it could be thousands for, for example, Ford vehicles. Like if we wanted to purchase a Ford pickup truck off of the state purchasing act, we would potentially be thousands, if not hundreds, in behind, which is, which is leading forward to to cancel a lot of orders because they simply can't keep that reduction.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? And I think you're looking for a direction setting and a straw vote on accepting this mechanism. So all those in favor of allowing staff to proceed with this manner, please show your hands. It's unanimous. Thank you. Manager Soddo, you have any last comments?
We prepared a resolution which will put out to the next council agenda as a omnibus item. So it'll come forward for that formal approval language that's included in the resolution, and we'll implement it after, based on tonight's recommendation.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Grosskopf. Probably going to have you stay up here because the next item is also on council chamber improvements, and this is a follow-up conversation. So if you're ready for this presentation, you can have the floor.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mayor and council members. I appreciate your time tonight. As we move forward here, we, we're moving on to the council chamber improvements. For a little bit of background, as you can see, maybe. There it is. Okay. So this was presented in the July 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting. At that time, council requested staff to come back with some updated pricing for the improvements that we had in mind for the council chambers here. So we have brought back some prices from two companies, Bear Construction and OHI, which stands for Our Home Improvement. They also do commercial work. This has been expressed as a desire to do this because this room is essentially in a lot of people's minds, the face of the city. This is where, I started in August. I have had so many meetings here with with outside companies and consultants and everybody in the committee meetings or the council meetings. I mean, there's, there's so much going on here. So we really want this room to reflect that we are a forward-thinking and professional organization, and that's what we're kind of trying to strive for with these improvements to be made. Not that I do not love wood paneling. So going into the project scope and cost, just to give a brief rundown of all of the items that are going to be, as far as improvements to be made in this room specifically, we will be removing the accordion wall that you can see right here. We'll be replacing ceiling tiles, replacing the carpet. We will replace and remove and replace the existing dais top. We'll replace the lighting and install vinyl base cover in standard coloring, four-inch base. We are also going to be adding some sconces behind the wall on the dais or behind the dais on the wall, drywall over the existing wood paneling. We're also going to be removing the chair rail and repainting the entire room, remove window between the council chambers and the AV room, which you can see right there. And we will also be looking to install a door behind the dais on the location of that will have to be looked at and examined, but we do plan to put it somewhere back there behind the dais to have access to the conference room, I believe, 230. So the two prices that we received for doing all of that work was $106,000 from Bear Construction and $70,000 from OHI. Do want to address that there is a little bit of a price difference. That comes from what we believe is a little bit of the discrepancy in allowances made. So for example, Bear Construction gave $40 per yard for carpet. OHI gave a price of $15 per yard for carpet. That difference alone counts to around $6,000. I wanted to point that out because OHI's will get us a standard carpet, a pretty good carpet, but Bear allows for just a much higher end. So wanted to point out that was some of the main reasons for the price difference between the two. And then what we have here on the second side is the recommended additional items to be done. So the additional items that we wanted to bring forward were the 230 conference room to drywall paint, ceiling tile replacement, and the window treatments. And then we also wanted to add two new doors and partitions to the hallway in the area of the EOC for the 230 conference room. Both of those are estimated to be around $36,000. The improvements to 230 are a city estimate of around $16,000. We do have a price to do the two new doors and partitions in the hallway from Bear Construction for around $20,000. And OHI has given us a price for that as well, which they have said will be in by the end of the week. There is some potential to remove costs for the lighting portion of it. We are working with vendors to see what the feasibility of that is at the moment. If desired, staff will perform an RFP to officially solicit vendors. This RFP will detail specifically which items we would like to move forward with. So we'll have the opportunity at that time to craft up which items specifically we want to have involved in this project. The cost data do not reflect the audiovisual upgrades that we have, such as replacement of microphones, the additional TV monitors. Funds exist within the AV equipment budget to perform such purchases and upgrades. The room would be unavailable for use for an estimated period of two months. So we would have to look at feasibility of alternate locations during the time that this project is underway. So for a quick final summary, maybe, here we go. Nope. You got too clicky. Okay. The fiscal year 22 budget allows for $100,000 in funding for improvements to city facilities. The council chambers are used as a frequent meeting space for council meetings, staff meetings, meetings with external residents and consultants. If council is agreeable, we will proceed with the process for an RFP process with work estimated to begin and complete within the first quarter of 2023. That's all I have.
Thank you for bringing this back to the council with some numbers corresponding to the improvements. You know, you mentioned that, I believe it's bear, bear cost incurred higher pricing because of the level of quality of some of the materials. In in your assessment, does that level of quality surpass the duration of time in which an inferior quality or material might last? I mean, it is, timeline-wise, will we get the same wear and tear out of them, or is it advantageous for the city council to explore using premium materials to get greater lifespan?
I think at the price that OHI gave us, that would give us a mid-range tiered material, and I think that would be perfectly acceptable. The carpet that we have in here now is a similar grade, so I believe it has lasted for quite a long time. So yeah, I think that the OHI price and those lower prices are, would be acceptable for us. We do have the option, of course, with Bear, we did not have to allot for that 40. We could always select something in the mid-range as well.
Okay. And then, given the fact that we are exploring the ComEd lighting grants and the opportunities there for overhauling our entire city building, a significant portion of cost may come out from Bear's $106,000 there. If that's the case, I would recommend that we went with the materials already quoted in the $106,000 versus maybe inferior materials of OHI. However, if OHI could get more premium level of materials and increase, and it would come with an increase, of course, to keep it competitive, I wouldn't mind exploring either. But I do believe we should move forward with this and open it up to members of the council's questions, comments, or concerns. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in support, too. I talked to Rob and Aaron about that, too. And I like Bear, too, because I mean, it's a local company, too, that was cut my eye. But that $36,000 difference is what caught my eye. But I appreciate the update. We're, a lot of it's based on the comparables or the elections. And this might be, I seem, not to put you on the spot or anything, but clearly, it's Aaron and your expertise. I'll say, if we're doing this, because we've talked about updating AV, and we've had great success with remote meetings and things like that, if we were going to do anything, and I'm totally making this up because it's not my expertise, if we had to, we're going to replace or redo the dais table, like, would we, would it be the right time that council consider like coring for electricity in the floor versus putting down new carpet, and then three years from now, we're pulling it back up to core to put electricity in? I don't know if it's a huge cost savings that we do in both now, or we wait longer. That was the only thing that came to mind, because I know we've all talked as a council to update the AV stuff.
That is something we are considering with the effort. We are willing to get some cost from AV in regards to replacement of some of the microphones that we currently use today. So that is something we are looking into at the moment as well.
Okay. It might only be a couple thousand dollar difference, so it might be a moot point, but that was just a thought, is if we put new carpet down, then we're coring out for something later.
So given that this is going to move forward into an RFP process where we request standardized pricing on the on the different items, we can include that as an optional add-on. So if we see that the proposals come in at a price below where our budget is at, then, and we want to add that on, at the time that the contract comes forward to the council, we can put that in there and say, yea, yere, nay, and the council can approve it or not at that point.
Great. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Any other questions or comments? Alderman Budmans?
So bear with me for a second, but it looks like Bear put a lot of work into this, and 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 then another company came in and like literally threw one page together. And and so after Bear did all this work, now we're going to go out to bid again? Is that, is that what you're saying?
So the procedure that we went through was to understand the costs. And we, we shared the information with Bear that we're doing our preliminary estimates to understand what a project like this would look like. Given that they've already done the exercise for them and be a simple submittal along the lines of the RFP response, but given the dollar value of the contract and our purchasing policy, we do, sure, without waiving, our competitive bidding process would would run through the RFP process. Certainly, there's no requirement that the council go with the low bid, and there's other circumstances that can be taken into account for that.
Except now everybody has a copy of Bear's bid to work from.
Well, with the RFP process, it's, it's a process where we set out the exact scenarios that we're looking for. So based on the feedback we received this evening, such as getting the in-ground boring, the higher-level carpeting grade, all of those different components, we can come back and request those specifications to be included in the proposal process. And again, given this is an architectural construction process, there isn't, there isn't a requirement for the city to go with the lowest bid. We can evaluate each proposal on its face as well as various components of the company that's submitting, their track record, and based on that information, the council can ultimately approve the vendor that's most responsible and that we desire to move forward with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Just from my memory, did, did we pay for either of these two vendors currently to come in and provide this assessment, or this was free on them to provide this estimate?
That is correct. It was free on them.
Any other questions or comments? So council action, are you looking for direction to proceed with this? Or what would you like to see from this evening's conversation and presentation?
A direction to proceed with the RFP process to bring forward back to council after we establish that.
So with that said, all those in favor of supporting proceeding with an RFP process for staff, please raise your hands in favor. And it's unanimous. We have direction set here with the straw vote, and we'll see this as it comes back. Thank you. Don't go far. This brings us to the fifth and final item, which is the generator. It's a follow-up conversation for Public Works Building, and again, deferring to you, Director Grosskopf. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I appreciate your time tonight. As we move through our fifth item for today. So the generator at the Public Works facility, to give off a little bit of background, this was, this has been, to my knowledge, a planned capital expense for a long period of time, a few years. This was presented back in July of 2022, and council had requested a little bit more information, and we bring it back. Here we are again tonight for this committee, the whole meeting. Right now, we are, the Public Works facility and the Park District facility is the only one without a permanent generator housed on site. I believe both City Hall slash BD, along with both fire stations, have permanent generators at their facilities. And this was an approved budgeted item for fiscal year 2022. For a quick summary, the current lead time for getting a generator actually in stock or getting delivered to the site is around 38 weeks. So we are on a pretty long timeline to have this arrive. The current process potentially for crews and emergencies is we would have to bring a mobile generator on site and park it in one of the drive lanes. And then we do have a transfer switch, as you already know, set up, and we can quickly connect that mobile generator to that transfer switch and get the facility power through that means. So just to kind of give a brief background, Public Works is responsible for fueling, maintaining, servicing, breakdowns of all city fleet vehicles. servicing, breakdowns of all city fleet vehicles and equipment, weekly refuse service, drinking and potable water supply and distribution, routine and emergency response to water main breaks and other underground utility issues, street maintenance and snowplow operations, and providing emergency response to victims of flooding or additional storm-related damages. This qualifies us, as Public Works says, essentially first responders, and our services are very much needed in times of emergencies. This is the proposed location for the generator. We'll go, it will be housed right here. I thought that was just an interesting aspect. There would actually be a concrete pad there where it's going to go, so it won't be sitting on mulch. The current restrictions that we have with the mobile generator is, there are numerous restrictions. So, that is the driveline and the location of the actual generator where we go right now. Currently, the power goes out, and we have no generator access, no permanent generator access. Our fire suppression system will actually not activate. So, if we lose power on a quick emergency, like, let's say, a lightning strike hits the building, we lose power, it starts a fire, our fire suppression system will not activate at that time. We would have to get the mobile generator and then bring it on-site to get that up and running. Additionally, response time, we can plan for a lot of events. We can, if we know an inclement weather is coming, or we know there's going to be an emergency, we can certainly plan and have that mobile generator parked on-site, ready to be hooked up, ready to be kicked in. A lot of the times, we don't have that opportunity. There's multiple situations where it could arise where we don't see a weather event coming, maybe it strikes us out of nowhere, and we lose power for one to two days. Could be pretty detrimental to our operations, which is obviously one of the benefits of having a permanent generator in sight. And then, again, responding if we do have a weather event, it's nighttime, it's snowing, it's an ice event, very dangerous conditions, it could be dark, slippery, trying to hook up electrical connections in a sleet, rain, snow mix, it probably is not going to be a very entertaining time for anybody. These are all issues that we would have to deal with. Decreased response time in emergencies, it's not uncommon to hear the phrase, you know, every minute counts, every second counts. When we are spending time trying to get our crews into the building, that's time we are wasting not responding to the actual emergency event at hand. Some other issues, again, the fire suppression system will not activate without power. Maintaining a generator through personal watch, personnel watch, refueling when needed. The generator that we have right now is diesel, the mobile generator we have, and we would need to have personnel there monitoring that generator to make sure nothing happens, and to refill it with fuel when needed. Diesel fuel can be costly and tricky to get in certain situations, and the current generator is a minimum of twenty years old, and it's getting more difficult to maintain due to lack of parts and age of equipment. Some benefits of having a permanent generator are not understated. Immediate power supply when we have an emergency issue. Apparently, I'm skipping ahead. It allows the city to use natural gas for powering the generator, which is a source that is, was cheaper and more greener than diesel fuel. Better location for the generator, it's out of the way, it's not in a driveline, reduces the risk and enhances mitigation for response to emergency events. Supported by Irma, the city's risk management agency, and of course, you have enhanced reliability. So, we reached out to Irma, and this is the kind of quote that they provide, and I'll paraphrase it, "Based upon the public service, the services the Public Works Department provides to the community, it is imperative that it be available to the community in an emergency or just day-to-day operations. If the facility loses power and has no way to recover, there is a possibility that there could be damage to the equipment property. Still, department may not be able to effectively respond in an emergency situation, causing damage to residents' property and potential injury to residents." Not only that, but all of our SCADA systems are run on this. A lot of our technology aspects, the phones, our shared file system, obviously, the internet, everything is kind of tied into that power, so if we lose that, a lot of our internal services go down. So, talk about the cost, what is included in the quote that was provided? Obviously, the generator, the installation of it, we have the electrical installation running it from the transfer switch over to the proposed location, the concrete pad for the generator, and then a fire pump controller transfer switch. What is not excluded is any work due to concealed, any additional work due to concealed condition, so if something's buried underground where the concrete pad is supposed to go and has to be moved, that would be an example of concealed condition, and the transfer switch, which thankfully is already installed, so we don't have to worry about that. So, the cost sharing, we plan to follow the Park District and City of Raleigh Meadows kind of outlay procedure. The total purchase price is three hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. If we follow our standard practice, around a hundred eleven thousand, seven seventy-five would be paid for by the Park District, and two hundred and twenty-three thousand, five eighty-four would be paid for by the City of Raleigh Meadows. There are grant opportunities available. We have applied for the most recent brick grant, and we are planning to hopefully achieve some funding through that. So, final summary, just to run over everything. Fiscal year 2022 budget allows for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in funding for a permanent generator at the shared services facility. Numerous pitfalls or inefficiencies with the current process of implementation for our mobile generator. As outlined, and there are a number of benefits that can be realized by having a permanent generator located on-site, and staff recommendation is to utilize approved funding in fiscal year 2022 budget to purchase and install the permanent generator at the Public Works combined facility. And that is all that I have for you today, and open to any questions.
Thank you, Director Grosskopf. So, this is at the shared facility with the Park District?
That is correct.
And at this time, are there long-term commitments for the Park District to remain there with the city in perpetuity with this cost sharing for the generator, if that were to proceed? I mean, are we looking to keep this facility shared with the Park District? Do we have any intention in the immediate future or near future to not do that?
So, as we're doing our space needs study, I think that will ultimately dictate where we end up going with that facility and our partnership with the Park District. I can't with certainty say at this time how long that coexistence may last, but given that there will be a number of years until that all gets worked out, it's in the, at least, near term that they will be in the facility with us, code, under the cost-sharing approach.
And to that point, my concern was just that if we were to share the expense in this, and if we were to run that analysis, and within five years or so, they were to depart that facility, or we were to depart that facility, or whatever means, would any parties require any sort of remediation on that, or repayment, or is this anything we have to worry about?
I don't believe so. I think historically, the city and the Park District have worked together to identify the CIP components in the budget related to that facility, so any facility improvements. Functionally, they've been treated as what, you know, private sector would call the sunk costs, so they were investments made into the facility in the future at the time that the two parties, if we do choose to part ways, and maybe the Park District leaves, or we may reevaluate, but I don't anticipate that we revisit or go back and explore past expenses and build that into a future payout of some sort.
Okay. And then, currently at the shared facility, do we have full-time employees stationed at that facility regularly? I don't know.
At the, yes.
With the shared facility?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Alderman Budmans?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How many other bids do we receive?
We have not received any other bids. This is off a Sourcewell. The price we got was off the Sourcewell Joint Purchasing Act. What we are looking at is another price coming in from Kohler as well, who are also a Sourcewell member. But this is the only one we have utilizing that Sourcewell joint purchase.
Well, seeing that it's thirty weeks, thirty-eight weeks, so I can't imagine why it wouldn't be worth it if we're going to look at getting an RFP together for a hundred thousand dollars for this room. I can't imagine not putting an RFP together for a three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar generator that takes thirty-eight weeks to get.
Yep. So, that Sourcewell is actually, they provide contracts that have already been competitively bid out, so the contract that Arc One has through Caterpillar has already been competitively bid, which allows us to enact that without waiving competitive.
So, we could always use that number then, right? Even if we don't get a better bid, then we could fall back to this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Alderman Budmans. Alderman Bessesi, then, O'Brien?
Yeah, I was wondering, so you want to use budgeted money from the 2022, oh, sorry, turning my head, from the 2022 budget? Have you had conversations with the Park District regarding their portion?
Yes, we have talked.
Of it?
Yes, we have talked.
That the timing and everything is all in line, and, because, I mean, we, you know, if we're ready to go on this, and they're not ready to go on this for similar reasons to what the mayor was saying, if there's...
It's just a shared expense.
It's a shared expense, yeah. So, I'm just a little concerned if we haven't gone and crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is on that part of it.
We've brought this to the executive director of the Park District, and functionally, with the annual CIP process, we bring the dollar amount to the Park District, which they then use for the budgeting process. Certainly, if we, if they feel that the one-time expenses is larger than they necessarily want to pay in a one lump sum, we would work with them potentially, maybe on a two-year payoff. We'd establish some sort of agreement in that way, but nonetheless, you know, this is akin to some of the other processes that we've had, where we have that annual meeting with the Park District Executive Director, and that dictates the budgeting process for the Park District. We have brought this to his attention, though, that this is something that we are moving forward with. It's been included in the CIP. I know past Public Works staff have also had a conversation with the executive director previously when this was getting budgeted for this year.
Cool. I just wanted to make sure, since we're starting to move on this a little bit right now, if they're ready to move on this as well.
And we'll work side by side with the Park District to make sure that that's all covered before anything ultimately moves forward.
Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just, I think this is the third time now, maybe, or so, that we've discussed this, and I'm continuing to be in support of this, is the way that I'm looking at it is, it's actually, it's a budget item, we've approved the budget, it's actually a hundred thousand dollars less than we were expecting, since it is the cost share. And what's just coming to mind most recently was the storm we had, I think, in the spring, and I don't want to speak out of turn, I believe it was Public Works, or maybe it was Fire that got called out to Algonquin, because it was a tree completely across Algonquin, and I believe it was PW that was able to respond, because obviously, Fire was taking care of other accidents around the city at that time. And I just couldn't imagine, we just, as Alderman Budman said, we just talked about spending ballpark a hundred thousand dollars to update this, where I'm roughly estimating maybe a thousand people come in, because it is the face of the city, this area, is that if we're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars for maybe what a thousand people might see a year, if we've got the chance for not much more than that to potentially help twenty-five thousand residents if something happens, as well as once businesses get fully funded or fully backed into the office, to me, it's a no-brainer, is that they are first responders, just like police or Fire. We saw evidence of it during one of the most recent storms, and I'd hate to be answering questions of, why was Public Works down for twelve or twenty-four hours after the storm went through, or some catastrophic event, and we had the opportunity to prevent that?
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Any other questions or comments? The council? Manager Saba, you look like you have some to say?
I just want to have one clarifying question before we proceed. We just want to know if the council desires us to go through the RFP process, the Sourcewell contract, as Aaron had mentioned, Public Works Director Grosskopf mentioned, does handle that, and we do typically go through that kind of purchasing, but certainly, if there is a desire, consensus amongst the council, that we do run an RFP just to identify and see if there are more competitive prices, we can do so. I just want to make sure that we're acting in the direction that the council desires us to move forward with.
It can't be detrimental, right? It cannot be detrimental to do that?
No.
And we were going to look at alternative generators, because I have no idea if that was the only thing that specified was a CAT generator versus a Kohler, or versus a Cummins, or whoever else, Mitsubishi, whoever else makes one that would fit our needs. So, I don't know the Sourcewell, if it was limited to one manufacturer.
It's not limited to one manufacturer. For example, I know Caterpillar is on Sourcewell, and so is Kohler, so we are working through a price right now for a Kohler generator that's similar, and specifications to the Caterpillar that was brought forward in this price. And then, certainly, like Manager Saba said, we could go out to that RFP process, it would not be detrimental, and just to get the full ballpark scope of what's out there.
Given the investment of its size or scope or scale, I think it would be proven for us to do that. Anybody have any conflicting opinion on that?
I just have one question about whether or not it, like, can't hurt. So, with that process, I want to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. What were the parameters used for the first review in order to get this quote?
I defer to Public Works Director.
So, the main parameter that we have is essentially the energy generated by the...
Consumption needs?
The consumption generate. So, two hundred and fifty kilowatts is what we're looking at. We're looking at enough power to sufficiently supply the building when it's down. That's our main spec, that's what's really going to drive, and then we also have the natural gas connection. So, those are kind of our two driving factors that we use to price this out.
I see. And I, and from what I understand, we've already, there's already been an RFP process that has taken place, and so that's why, is there anything that we expect to be different? When was that taken, when did that take place?
No, you know what? You just raised another question. I don't want to deviate too much, but with the consumption needs, for example, my whole home generator required nineteen kilowatts, right? But because of the smart toggle switches and the computer-aided systems, I could get away with a fifteen kilowatt generator, and it would toggle in time when, let's say, my downstairs air conditioner would turn on versus my upstairs air conditioner, because it would sense power needs. Can we include those specifications in the RFPs that we use computer technology in order to utilize the most efficient generator, rather than just going with the most robust, because we need two hundred and fifty thousand kilowatts, right? If we can get away with a more efficient generator and use computer-aided technologies, then I think we should do that.
Absolutely. Well, we can look into that option as well before we move forward with anything official for the RFP.
I'm sorry, Alderman Sanoikis, for deviating.
No, no worries. I just wanted to make sure that when we're doing our RFP, that the parameters are consistent with the original RFP that was already done on behalf of the other source that we had. I'm sorry, not filling in the well today. What was the other, name of the other source?
Sourcewell.
Thank you for Sourcewell, so, yeah.
Arc One is the vendor, or is there, are they the...
Yeah, Arc One is the vendor. They can utilize, since the Caterpillar generator is on the Sourcewell contract, and they're Sourcewell members, they can utilize that price.
And who do we purchase directly from?
We would purchase directly from Arc One.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments, concerns? Then it's time for direction. Those in favor of supporting the generator, please show hands of pursuing the RFP process and pursuing the generator needs. It's unanimous. There's your direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Appreciate that. That looks like that wraps up the fight of...
Nothing else for Aaron tonight?
No, nothing else for Aaron. He's off the hook. But that does make us look like we're finished here, so what I'll look for is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoikis, for a second. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, at eight fifty-three, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.